Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectment to order for January 23rd, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without end, and justice for all.
Just a quick, we were having some commentary before the meeting on the proper way to do the pledge, and Craig was schooling us. Thank you, Craig. First thing, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Zoom. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? Thank you. First order of business is to review the minutes from October 3rd, 2022. We had an appointment for the Park and Rick Board. This is Shuttleworth. Talked to the, about the Senior Center Building Committee. And talked about special town meeting. That appeared to be the major topics at that meeting.
Motion to approve, October 3rd, 2022 minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes of January 4th, 2023. Recap of the Highway Garage Edition. Appointed a secondary, an alternate animal inspector, and had a recap of the Veterans District. For the main topics. That was a brief meeting because we had a further meeting with the ambulance oversight committee that night.
Move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the order of business is a hearing for a dog at 17 Raymond Drive. Shelley, could you come up and turn on your mic, please? Thank you for coming out on such a terrific night.
You're welcome.
So good to see you here so often.
Yes.
Get your own little nameplate in front of you. I know we have the parties in attendance, but could you give us a quick overview first?
I, yes, so a week ago Friday night, we were called to 17 Raymond Drive, where the dog Luna owned by Shauna Shay had gone to Christopher Shannon's house at 203 Allen Street and had killed two of his chickens, and seven were missing. And the seven did come back later on, and then he had told us that within the past year, that she has killed two of his, two more of his chickens. And so he had wanted a hearing.
Okay, so had you been aware of an incident with this dog before? Has this dog been on your radar or on the police's radar?
Oh, yeah. Oh, several times getting loose. Several, several times. No, she wa- No, 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 just, you know, just running in and out of traffic and, but no one, we didn't, I hadn't heard about it, but Christopher did say that he did call about it, but I never got the message.
So just to recap, we are holding a dog hearing under Chapter 140 of the National Laws. Could I ask the owner of the dog to come up? You want to grab that seat next to Shelley and turn that microphone on, please? It's okay. Okay, so.
So I can tell you that it was probably eight or nine months ago, my dog did get loose, and I'm the one who caught her with one of his chickens in her mouth. The chicken was not dead, it was hurt though. I could tell it was injured. And I'm the one who went and knocked, I guess I knocked on his neighbor's door. They wouldn't have even known it was my dog unless I, so I found her with the chicken in her mouth at my neighbor's house. She dropped the chicken, and then I walked over and I, I wasn't sure what house, because those chickens run loose around Allen Street. So I knocked on the door of the house who I thought owned the chickens, and I told them that, you know, my dog had one of their chickens, it was injured, but it's where it was. She said they weren't her chickens. And she said she would tell her neighbor. That was like eight or nine months ago. And then last Friday night, I wasn't home, I was at work. She must have gotten out, and they say she killed two chickens. I didn't witness it. Like I said, the first time she did injure one, but she's a very friendly dog. She's not mean or aggressive. I'm not sure what happened, like I said, but that's all I have to say.
She's a very nice dog.
She's friendly, she's, yeah.
But the dog is not under your control?
No, the dog is under my control. She sometimes, like her collars have gotten broken. She's a big, huge, strong dog. She's on a metal collar now. She used to get out all the time in the summer.
She did. She's been much better.
And she hasn't gotten out in the past few months, only a handful of times. And half the time she calls me, it's not my dog, it's someone else's dog.
Well, we do seem to be in a bit of a run with huskies, so that's.
On Raymond Drive.
Yeah, so she thinks, that's what I mean, when they call, she always assumes it's mine, and nine out of 10 times lately, nine out of 10 times before it was her, but.
But usually I know it's two, so I know it's.
When you say it's on a collar, so it's on a run, the house is not fenced?
The house is fenced. She's destroyed the fence. She can get around the fence, she can jump the fence. So the house is fenced all the way around. The fence don't hold her. So I have a big metal screw with a 500-pound pull. She's actually broke her collar a few times, that's how she's gotten out, because she will put her on it, and then she runs if she sees like a bunny or something, you know, or another dog. There's a dog that lives across the street, when he's out, she tries to go to play with him. So she's broken her collar a few times, but I got her a metal collar now, so that's not going to break. I, I don't see how it can break.
And the harness doesn't pull, the tether doesn't pull out of the ground, it's secure?
No, yeah, it stays in there, yeah, yeah.
And have you thought about a harness versus a collar? Full body?
I don't know. I mean, I think she would get out of that.
And again, Craig, they chew, a lot of dogs chew hard.
She's gonna, yeah, she'll chew out of anything, she'll get out of anything, so this is the best. What I have her in now is the most secure.
When your dog is out in the backyard, do you, are you monitoring the dog, keep an eye on it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It just, it happens and then you can't catch up?
No, and so the thing is, and if you chase her around, she's just going to run and run into the street, so.
Yeah, you can't catch her.
You can't catch her. She, she comes when she wants to come, or she goes to who she wants to. So a lot of times there's a couple houses down that the lady has huskies, and she knows her. So she'll go to her, and then she brings her home, you know, like she won't, she runs from you. She'll look at you and know you're coming, and you can have food, you can have whatever, she, she'll be, you can't chase her around. But like I said, that day I saw her with the chicken, I, I did chase her around, and she did drop the chicken. The chicken was still alive. And like I said, I'm the one who went and knocked on his door. That last Friday night, I was at work, so.
Does the dog have any obedience training or anything like that? Does it listen to commands?
Oh, yeah, yeah. She's a good girl. She's very friendly, gets along with all other dogs. My mom has like a 10-pound dog, and my, my dog is humongous, and they play, and it's the cutest thing in the world. She's not aggressive, never bit anyone, never growled at anyone. She's so friendly. That's all she wants to do is play. And to be honest, I don't know what happened with the chickens, but I, I can guarantee you, she probably wanted to play with them. She didn't mean to hurt anything, you know what I mean? That's just how she is. She's very playful, and she loves all animals.
Shelley, have there been any reports of this dog, again, being, you know, with people, any incidents with people?
Oh, not at all. No, she's very nice.
Okay. Have you seen this new collar?
No.
No, she hasn't.
Want to hear from the neighbor? You want to come on up? Or you can stand there and use that one, we're short on spaces up here, whichever. Turn that your way. So give us your name.
Christopher Shannon.
Hi, Chris.
I live at 203 Allen. Friday, I was working from home, my neighbor called me and said, a dog ran through her yard with a chicken in her mouth. So I went out and chased it down. It went up Raymond Street to where there's a truck parked with some equipment around it. And it was a half a carcass of a chicken. When I was there doing that, evidently she went back to my house, because I went back to my house, and she was in the chicken coop in the run with another chicken. And came out and ran the same, in the same general direction. By then the police were there. They couldn't catch her. And the next day, a gentleman from Raymond Street showed up at my house, and he has pictures of the dog eating one of my chickens right next door, in my next-door neighbor's yard, right next to her tree. Probably in March was the first one. I got home, my neighbor came over and said, she just saw a dog with my chi, with one of my chickens, with the Rhode Island Red. I went up the street, found the carcass of the Rhode Island Red right next door to her house. I took it home and buried it. About three months ago, a black chicken, Americana, disappeared. I followed the feathers up next to where that truck was, and but couldn't find anything. And then this past Friday, the two of them.
Is that like near Crumbs?
Yeah, oh, no, 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 it's the beginning of.
At the end of the, I'm on the Allen Street.
Towards Allen.
I'm right near his house, literally, his house. She, it's, yeah.
It's right on the corner of Allen Street.
And I can tell you, the one time there was no carcass, she didn't eat it at all. I'm the one who had her drop one, and she didn't.
Was it a red one?
I don't know what color it was, I don't remember. It was in the summertime. It was the one that I knocked on your neighbor's door.
Actually, excuse me, so actually went into your chicken run and grabbed the chicken?
Yep, I saw that.
So I know the time that I seen them, they were all loose running around.
Oh, they do. They do. They go between my house, my next-door neighbor's house, her neighbor's house, and my other, my neighbor on the other side. They make a big circle.
And then come back?
None of, yep, and all the, all the neighbors know it, and they don't mind it. They don't have a problem with it, because I even offered to fence off, and they said, don't bother.
I just know about the two times. I didn't know about no third time, so I'm not sure if that was my dog or not. But I can say I know it was her, that one time I seen her with the chicken in the mouth, and I believe that last Friday, because she was out, that she did it. But I don't, I don't know about the third time.
Right.
I'm not going to say, you can't say it.
Well, let's just go, let's just go with two right now.
Yeah, I know, yeah, because they get loose a lot around.
Obviously, this cannot keep happening. You think you're taking care of it by having a better collar?
Oh, I do, yes.
We're fortunate that there is no danger to people at this point.
No, yeah, she's very friendly, yeah.
Shelley has, you know, talked about that as well. Obviously, there needs to be some compensation, talked about here. Needs to be some protection as well. You shouldn't have to go through this. This might not be the only place, you're not the only person with chickens. They can go down Weir Road, Weir Road, and there's three or four people on Weir Road with.
I know, I've caught her at the end of Weir before, like she, she's run away from me, but that's what I mean. When I chase her, she goes further and further and further.
I think the problem must be when you bring her from the house to the thing in the ground, is that when she gets loose?
Sometime, so sometimes she had, well, so the, the chain comes right up to my back door. The Friday she got loose from my son. My son actually was letting her out. And she had the, the collar with the, that just snaps, plastic. She literally tore that shit. I mean, they're meant for big, strong dogs, and she can tear that in. She's huge and she's strong, like I said, you can't catch her, you can't. She's friendly. I don't want to make her seem like a beast, but she's a friendly beast. She is, she's humongous. So that was the last, that was, she broke the collar and got loose. Ever since then, she's had the metal one on, and she's been fine. And ever since I put the stake in the ground before her breaking that collar, she's barely gotten out.
Have you ever thought about invisible fence or anything like that?
I don't know, I'm not.
I don't think that would keep her in.
Yeah, she's not, she's, I'm telling you, she, I have a chain-linked fence around almost all my house, and then a little part is wood. She literally tore apart the whole fence. I mean, she can jump right over it if she wants.
My sister put in the invisible fence, and she's got, well, she had three big dogs. One of them got out and got hit by a car. She put in the invisible fence, and she's never had a problem with them getting out again. And after six, eight months, she doesn't even have to turn the fence on anymore, because they won't go to it.
I think it's the conditioning and the training.
Exactly.
Yeah, some dogs, it works really well, but, you know, her knowing that she can go out and run around, and there's chickens too, you know, I don't think it's going to keep her.
No, she's not, she's.
How about the speed and the size? So you're right, because I've gone through the same thing.
She's very.
I think the bottom line is that you don't have 100% control of the dog. We need to go to that. I know you talked about a new collar.
Yeah.
And that's going to be something through the animal inspector, we usually give one strike. You know, and that's obviously with the compensation.
That's fine, yeah.
That's fine.
I don't need a compensation.
Well, you've lost.
I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for the dog to not kill my chickens.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's all. I don't want her to kill your chickens either, but I don't think she intentionally killed them, though. That's what I'm telling you. The time that I saw her with it in her mouth, I think she was just trying to play with it. I don't think she, like the way you said she was eating it.
I'll go to the guy on Raymond Drive and find the picture.
I don't, I don't.
That's okay, I don't think, we need to go there.
You don't like my dog, and I don't even.
No, 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 we don't need to go there. I think right now, we need to contract, you need to get control of your dog.
I will pay him, yes. I, that's why I knocked on the door to offer to the first time.
You need to get control of your dog.
My dog is under control. She's under.
To show you're under control.
She's under control.
Shelley's going to verify that. If we come back here, if we come back here, the next stage is going to be, we have options for either, I would say, requiring a better fencing structure or ordering the dog out of town.
That's fine, yeah.
You know, because this can't go further. Let's say, your neighbor's being, I honestly, pretty reasonable here.
No, I understand that.
And I think this is a good dog here, it really is.
It is a good dog, yeah, and animals are animals, you know?
I like animals more than I like people.
I do too. And she's a friendly, really friendly dog. She's very nice. She gets out, but a lot of other big dogs that look like her get out all around my house too. So I, like, I can say, I can say that one time I saw her with the chicken in her mouth, I know for a fact it was her.
I know, it's our monthly, it's our monthly Raymond Drive dog hearing, right now.
No, I know, and I'm just saying, my dog, everyone on Raymond Drive knows my dog, but there's a lot of other big dogs that.
Well, there are, but none of them are killing chickens. So, any comments?
No, I think we have to ensure that the dog doesn't get out again, kill any more chickens. And, you know, there's another provision in the law that allows us to assess a $200 bond.
Right.
You have the dog leased for 12 months, restrained for 12 months, it's a $200 bond, that's Chapter 160s, Chapter 141, Section 160, so. I think we'll, I think the best thing we could do now is just memorialize the fact that you're going to try to keep this under control.
Yeah.
And if it happens again, we're going to come back here, we have to take more drastic action.
Absolutely.
When will you get the new collar?
She's already had it.
So Shelley will go there tomorrow and verify that.
Okay.
Okay. Are you home tomorrow?
I'm home during the day.
Okay.
I go to work for like one.
So if the two of you can organize that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we don't want to hear back. How do you feel about this?
I'm fine.
Great, appreciate that. So let's consider this one closed right now, and we want to wish you both the best, and hope not to see you back here.
Thank you.
Shelley, while you're here, any updates on anything else, or?
The other two huskies, they, they found homes for all the puppies, so there's no more puppies at the house. And they haven't got.
I didn't know they had puppies.
There was 10 puppies.
How many?
10.
10 puppies.
10 husky puppies?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so, no, they haven't gotten out in a couple weeks, and they are both as.
This could be a sequel, like 101 Huskies instead of 101 Dalmatians.
Thank you, Don.
And they, as far as I know, are both in training right now. So they're trying, they're really trying.
And there's been no other escapes?
Not, not that I've heard of for a couple weeks.
Good. So things are quiet.
And isn't there another one there too, down the street?
Yes, they've been good too.
Okay, alright.
Are there any other dogs on Raymond Drive we don't know about?
Um, I, I hope.
Yet.
I hope.
Alright.
I had to ask, I'm sorry.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, Shelley.
Thanks, Shelley.
Drive safe.
Alright, so next on the agenda, we do have a hearing at 6:30, but while we're waiting for that time to arrive, we have the budgets for the Selectmen's Department that are pretty much under our purview. Bob, thank you for a nice little Excel. I was hoping to go back 20, 25 years, but we'll get by with four.
Just to let you know, a few of the items here. Both Pam and Jane will be Grade 5, Step 11 next year. That is reflected in the hourly rate for both of them, one for 30 hours, one for 35 hours. I haven't put any, I'm waiting on the Advisory Board to come up with any kind of COLA that they might do, and I haven't put any numbers in on the far right-hand column requested at this point. As far as the sheet itself, I did add a column for special town meeting, budget adjustments, and I added another column for the current year up to the end of December, so 1-1-23. To give you some idea of how much has been spent thus far on the 23 budget as a way to help judge next year's budget. I also added, which we didn't seem to have, town reports. I added the ambulance service. And ambulance, town reports, and I think I added, I added another one too.
150?
So.
Well, that's going to be different.
No. What's that?
Stormwater.
Oh, it's stormwater, yes.
One thing on the first page. Employee benefits. Obviously, we saw quite a bit of a jump at the special town meeting for that. Some of it was due to, obviously, buyouts as employees retire. We'd like to get a handle on those who may plan on doing an FY24. I'm not aware of any at this point.
I'm not.
So we may catch a break.
Just the one police officer, which we'll take care of in the current budget.
Right, okay, so I did have a conversation with a former, former member of the Advisory Committee who's a principal at Hub Insurance, asking what they're looking at for health insurance for next year. I know personally at my company, we were projected at 12% last year. And this year, it's more in the range of 3%, coming down quite a bit. So hopefully, Scenic Valley will see the same thing, and we're not going to see that huge impact we did. Where we are, Don, do we already complete the third year, or is next year the third year of the increase, up to 75%?
This is coming up.
This coming year is the third year.
So it might see a little more of that, but. Hopefully, that might be a wash, not on the 500,000. So even though we did get to the 500,000 range, we might not see, you know, a huge increase from that.
Also, on your, on my report, I did put some budget issues.
Right.
If you want to add to those, those are the ones that I have at this point, potential.
I am concerned about the electricity part. I did ask for a report to be done this week. For instance, streetlights is kind of a concern, and asked them to do a year-to-year recap what we've seen a year ago versus the bills we just got now. I'm worried that we may be running out of money in that account. You know, I know certainly I've saw in the past three months, and I don't know, Craig, if you have the number, I would say it's, gosh, over three months of 3, 30% increase in my home electric bill with virtually no increase in usage, you know? So the town is not immune from that either.
The school building repair, I remember Aaron Osborne here a month or two ago, they were here, the superintendent and him, talking about capital needs for the school, schools that are in town property. I didn't know if they had reached back out with what they were looking for.
No.
And if that's going to go in that line.
Just looked at what they've done so far. And it's just the pattern of the last few years, we put 15 in the budget.
Well, typically, those are the small repairs, like a tile floor, something like that. I thought he was referring to more major capital thing. That may be an opportunity, Craig, to bring them in.
He was referring to the switches, wasn't he?
No, he was talking about like door locks and different little things here and there. I didn't think it was, you know, some flooring here and there. I didn't think it was meter stuff.
Well, maybe. And typically, they'll take, and we've always worked very well with Ed. You know, we, it's supposed to be that 50-50 thing, and we appropriate 15,000. But typically in the past, and Don, you may recall this, he might take over 25,000, just to, again, this is minor, whether it was getting the drain fixed at Green Meadows or having a small roof repair at either school, something like that. But I'm concerned, I think they talked about, for instance, the door work was going to be pretty expensive.
Was it?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Much more than this type of thing, and this would almost be, get into a capital type thing. So I would wonder, though, when you talk about the door thing, and that's something that Gina has worked on in the past, that we could apply for some type of public safety grant. Because, I mean, that gets into school safety, and it seemed like there's an opportunity for funding there. Because I go back to, gosh, years ago when Gina was working on the maglock thing, and she got part of that paid for by a grant to upgrade the doors. So with the concern about school safety, I'd be surprised if there wasn't some money out there for that type of thing. You would think, right?
Look around.
So if we can get definition from them on the projects, they feel on a priority basis. And then we look for ways to help them with funding. Ed has gone, Mike, Ed's assisting, but Mike's supposed to be the guy, right? Well, maybe it's an opportunity for both Ed and Mike to come to a meeting, and we can go over this, you know, more in detail. And we have time for that type of thing, and I think that's the type of thing where maybe we should be doing it more detail at a meeting. And bring it out there.
You'll notice at the bottom of that page, the budget for the website is going up some because we're adding AudioIVE to make the website more handicap accessible.
But that, but the increase, the bill we signed before, a lot of that was setup, it's not the annual.
The big bill for setup is over with. Also, they're having a kickoff meeting on Wednesday. I'll send you, I don't have the code for it yet, but when that code comes in probably tomorrow, I'll send it to you if you want to, want to tune in. They're just basically going to talk about it and how to, how to use it and so forth. So it'd be good for all of us to know how to use it if someone needs some instruction.
Do you think legal would go down next year?
I would think so, and we did have, Jane does have a recap sheet breaking out the legal charges by different departments, assessors, planning, things like that. So we can get a sense of where the majority expense has been. Obviously, we'll always have the town meeting expenses, reviewing the warrants, stuff like that. The assessors use it sometime as well, but.
We don't have a, we don't have a number for Town House Custodial Service at this point, but we will get it soon, and it's undoubtedly going to go up a little bit.
I saw postage going up too.
I expect to have an, our postage, I think, is going up. Postage is going to go up, yes. Actually, postage went up today, didn't it?
Today, yeah.
Also, ambulance service, I should have that numbered tomorrow. Since we have the ambulance oversight committee tomorrow, we've asked for it. He did say that it might be in the range of three, so he's going to try and keep it at three, something like that.
Okay. Craig, do you want to give us a quick little recap of the transfer station testing and what you, your, I know there's not a lot of specifics at this point.
There's not a lot, but the DEP is now requiring PFOS testing for town landfill areas, and since ours is closed, it's being monitored. They've started doing testing there. They're also doing testing of 11 homes around the landfill from the previous 20 years ago when we had that contamination issue in town, which got remedied by the Scenic Valley Water District. The PFOS testing is new requirement by the DEP. They've taken some samples, and there was two positive hits nearby the landfill. Because of that, the DEP is now requiring quarterly testing just to monitor that. And that testing for PFOS is fairly expensive, and rough estimate, I was told, roughly around $72,000 a year for testing.
Right.
Now, that would cover all of it.
But the 11 homes, but the 11 homes were tested, two out of 11 got hit.
Two, two were got hit. They were low, but they were enough to trigger additional testing throughout the year.
So even the ones that have zero hits still required to be tested?
Because they're all within that area.
Proximity? Really, that seems, I'm not saying unfair, but, you know, it seems like they shouldn't be required to have quarterly testing if they have a zero. We could do annual on them at a zero level.
I can't say what the DEP's requirements are, but that's what I was told, it'd be quarterly on everything there.
Alright, so you're going to keep track and see if we can manage the testing with the current account level we have.
Right, and like I said, the quarterly testing, you know, the hope is that numbers come back down, and then we will fall through and fall off that scale. But if they stay the same or they raise, the DEP may step in and say we need to look into further action.
Right.
That's all, something on the radar for the future.
Excellent.
The funding is definitely gonna have to go up for that, for transfer station.
Now, we do have the income coming in from the solar at the landfill, maybe that should be targeted towards paying the expense of the landfill, let's just say. Six figures coming in from there. All right. Anything else in the budget we see here? Obviously, it's a little early up to the salary part. You're getting quotes on insurance and stuff like that, the town vehicles.
The other question I had is.
Obviously, the fleet's increased, so, you know, the fleet has increased.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting quite a, quite a fleet of vehicles, huh?
Well, we have the new truck, new truck, what else we got?
Well, if we, if we could give the, if you give the old truck to the Parks and Rec, they won't still have, you know, expanding there.
One, and then the second we're getting cars, too, you said, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They were getting mopeds.
Really? Those scooters, what are they called?
Segways.
You and I don't need anything. We can walk to our meetings, Craig, for crying out loud.
The only other question I had about.
I can't even walk to the mailbox.
Salaries is a couple of the potential retirees from our department. Are we gonna need extra money for training in temp help, maybe?
That's a possibility, but the other thing is that if you did get a new employee, they would come in at a lower rate, so you'd have extra money in that account, right? Because they wouldn't have the step number, right? So, something to think about. And then, of course, we have the potential for some possible contract modifications. We're not sure at this point. I did talk to Mark earlier, and since he was coming in next week, to have the conversation with Parks, I asked him to bring his budget at the same time, and we'll get to talk it over with him then, getting down to one trip, hoping that there's no storm at that time. All right. That wraps that up, and now we have a public hearing. Hot days. So, we have a public hearing for a wine and beer retail license. Anybody here speak for that? Are you a lawyer? Crap. Rats. Turn your mic on, please. So, give us a brief review, please.
I represent the Good Food People. Jim Valades and his daughter Alexis are here with me. They've been running food businesses for probably about 22 years. Jim owns 90 Meats on Amicon Street in Springfield. They own Armadas that burned down in Long Meadow, in the very slow process of being rebuilt. They bought the Village Food Mart from Gary Mayotte as another food enterprise, and Alexis is going to be running that on a daily business. And as you know, there was a beer and wine license with that entity, and so they'd like to have that. Initially, we thought transferred, but I guess we missed the deadline, so it's a new license, and we're looking for your approval.
So, want to give us a brief?
So, what's the process after we approve this? Do they have to go to the ABCC? Has it already done that?
Josh Grochstein is telling me yes, it has to go to the ABCC. He represents.
Do you need our approval before you can apply to the ABCC, or is there?
Yep. Yeah, I have the notice, too, for you. Yep, so, if it gets approved at the town level, then it goes to the ABCC, and I think it comes back to the town and gets issued from the town.
Okay, but you can't submit to them without getting municipal approval first.
Right.
Okay, fine. All right, obviously, this is not something we do very often, because you, I think, are at the only establishment in town that qualifies for this. So, well, that's been transferred in the past few years. Everyone else is on scanning. Can you give us a quick recap of how you're marketing it and what the public interaction is?
I'm not sure. They want to continue the Village Food Mart, and essentially, the same business that it's been a local food establishment for years.
Is it under control? You have a population going through, so, secure, not near the door, somebody's not walking in, dashing in, running? These are the type of typical questions.
Okay. Can I ask the Valades people that should come and answer?
They can go, they can use that mic there.
I think she's got a full PowerPoint presentation to show us.
Yes, prepared.
Thank you.
Okay, so in regards to the location, it is not by the door. It won't probably be in the same location that it was when Gary had it. We were going to put it more towards the meat department and the further end of the store.
Underview of the shares.
Correct, yes.
And the butcher people as well.
Yes, yes, so there'll be eyes on it.
And what about ID verification?
Yes, I think we, we did just put in a scanning system for the registers, and within that there, I'm going to purchase a module that will, so we'll scan the ID, and so there'll be no room for interpretation.
Did you have a wine and beer license at Armadas?
We did not.
Oh, so you're not that familiar, okay.
No.
Is there training you have to go through, your staff or whatever?
I do not, no.
You don't?
Not off the top of my head.
Correct.
No, no, but I mean, it's all about the ID thing at this point, really, so. Well, they do the undercover thing, you know, pretty often, believe me, so. I think the best thing is that you have the eyes on it right now. You have, it's not in the back corner where nobody's seeing it or something like that, so that's good. Great. I know Craig had some suggestions about what brands you should be listing.
Okay, all yours.
He can pass those on later.
Got it.
Craig?
I'm good.
Pam, Bob, anybody? Hate to, hate to run you through the wringer like this.
Is there any, is there?
Bright lights.
I guess we ask if there's anyone on, on the Zoom that is a, a butter that has any comments or?
We received no comments from any of the legal notices, correct?
We have not.
The Centennial Commons have the crosswalk, so they can get over there pretty easy for shopping. Good.
So, I move approval of the wine and beer license for the Hamden, is it, what's the official name of your business?
Village Food Mart.
Village Food Mart, the Hamden.
Is this the Good Food People, or is it Happy?
Would be the license. The holder of the Good Food People.
And who's the manager on record? That was kind of the delay for why you're getting somebody's name, right?
Oh, no. That's myself, yes.
Somebody in mass or something. You are. Congratulations.
Really?
Welcome.
I will second Don's approval.
All those in favor?
All right. There you go.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, what kind of forms we have to fill out? Do we send it to the ABCC? Do you do it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and.
Thank you. By the way, you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, looking a great job over there. People are very happy with it, yeah.
I think I mentioned to the board that I stopped over at East Lamentown Hall, and was not impressed where I talked to several departments, and they really weren't aware of the product. So, I did put a message in to Ryan Quimby, who's the head of their IT department. While I was with Bob this morning, he got back to me, he was in the middle of an open gov meeting, he said, Bob, which must be a good time. But he'd been happy to meet with me this week, and since he's right down the road from me, and I'll see how they're using it there, because that was one of the towns they mentioned. And I stopped at the town manager's office, I stopped at the assessors, and they're like, huh?
I talked to Mary McNally, and she said that it's low-key, but apparently, she thinks it is being used in several departments.
Yeah, it didn't seem to be that problem. I was in there with her and her new assistant person.
They may not know the name, they may not know that's what they're using, just other stuff, you know?
Well, I mean, it does represent a significant change in the way you do business, and I think training is important, and, you know, steady interaction with staff about the necessity of digitizing documents.
It could be, so, I'll chat with, I'll chat with the IT department this week, and I'll have a report back to the board next week. And any, obviously, either of you want to stop over and chat with Ryan? And if we get a couple of the names from the fish people that are.
I've asked them, I've asked them, I sent a message to them over the weekend, asking for other, the names of other towns in the area that are using the system.
Sure. And Craig, you know, you're all around for business, you know, different places, you might find one near you. Where do you go?
So, I mean, if you're gonna meet with them, I'd like to have a couple of questions answered. I mean, to me, I'm having a tough time with the cost of this, the yearly cost, the upfront cost, and we're not even getting a scanner, so we're gonna still have to purchase a flatbed scanner, and basically, all we're purchasing is OCR software and cloud storage. So, my question is, why can't we just use our server, if the, gonna be operating in this building, purchase our own scanner, and then see if we can get just OCR software from our IT vendor already? Maybe that'll save us a lot of money in yearly costs, too.
The OCR part is important for the cataloging and searching later.
Correct, right. But we're not, my concern is the price we're paying for the OCR, the cloud storage, the user limits, you know, 100 gigs per user, we just need one, one central location for them to store the files, which is what we have in our central server. And then we just need somebody to scan it and put it into the appropriate folders on the server. So, the OCR is good for searching, I think that's great. But can we do that on a, you know, townhouse level rather than having to go through the cloud somewhere?
Yeah.
Another service.
And I am concerned about, like you said, the flatbed thing. I mean, we talked about the plans, planning, conservation, building.
I think it'd be more beneficial to buy a piece of hardware that we know we're gonna need and use, scan it that way, and then you can go from there and scan it right to your computer, and then from there, you just plug it into the OCR software and put it on the server or in the file somewhere.
It would be key to see how some other people are implementing it. Right now, it's not putting a vendor down, heck, I'm a vendor, I go out and sell, but I'd like, user use is key.
I agree, we need, we need a professional scanning system on a cart, so we can move from department to department. The other way to do it, in the conversation that I had, he said, in some communities, they distribute the scanning systems that we already have in most of our offices. They use those.
Right, and I don't know if Entree has something that they know of. Maybe they deal with this with other entities, you know? You know, I think I looked on Civics Plus, I think, offers some OCR software, too, if I remember correctly. I was doing a quick research of just who offers OCR, and there's a lot of companies that just offer that particular service.
Long as it's searchable.
Correct.
Right. That brings up a good point. Just go back to the budget part. We see a pretty good number for our IT stuff. I think it'd be nice to have a meeting with Entree, like, what are we getting for our dollars as we explore that part as well? What's their, and I mentioned this before, what's their plan for our municipal service for the next year? Is it hardware? For instance, I saw a bill in the folder for another computer, and I wrote on it, "Who's?" You know, where's this computer going? You know, what ones do we have that need to be replaced? What are they looking at? It's not like they have $1,500 we used to spend before, and now we're talking, you know, between service and stuff, you know, $50,000, $60,000 here.
I think I saw a breakdown once, a few months ago, that had a list of our hardware, but they were calling laptops workstations, so I got confused by their terminology, and like, okay, so workstation to me is a physical tower.
Right.
This is not, this is a.
And some people have theirs as a docking type thing, and they take it home, and that's fine, too. But us, as the board, don't really have a good overall sense of where we stand. So, if we could set up a time for them to come in at a meeting in February, like to have a sense of their direction, they're proposing for the town, because I'd like to hear proposals, like, we're agreeing to it.
They did do a list. We have a list. We do not have a plan or replace, orderly replacement, but we have, we now have a list, and all of our machines are now tagged as well.
And I will say, if this is just a presentation they're making to us, I'm happy to personally have this in the afternoon. We're not making a decision, but if it's easier for them to come over and show the board at 2:00 in the afternoon what's happening, that's fine, too.
Yeah, and just to go back to the Laserfish, lost my train of thought. Oh, we work, we're partnering with what, South Hadley? Are they waiting for us to make a move before they decide what they want to do, or are they researching stuff as well?
They're also talking about how they want to do it.
Okay.
They're, I think they're continuing, they're still planning to hire a company that will come in and digitize older files.
Okay.
That gets to be expensive, and, and I'm not suggesting that for us, I'd like to see how far we can go on our own. In the case of Laserfish, they would set up a system, they would set up a series of folders and show us how to do it.
That was my point, though, they're setting up a system with a series of folders, which is just like our OneDrive right now.
Yeah, sure.
So, it's just, it's very redundant to me, and that seems like a waste.
Except, except the searchability. I think that's.
Correct, and that's why I keep referring to saying, just OCR software, you know, what does that entail, you know? Is it just a program we can run and buy a one-time license and run that program? Because the yearly fee was very, you know, there.
Well, I'll bring in Entree for a discussion.
Before we go on to the discussion of the community meeting, Dwayne Mosher is here, just if I can beg the board's indulgence, we had a meeting of the Senior Center Building Committee this morning, and one thing came up about the fact, I'm gonna say, the information we're, we're working with may not be up to date. So, Dwayne, want to wander up? So, Dwayne is the chair of the Senior Center Building Committee. We had a proposal given to us, you know, before about a potential layout, but it used the, the restrictions that we had from six years ago about what the land was. And as Gary Weiner said at the meeting, things may have changed. For instance, we know there was wetlands delineated between the senior center and the police station, but maybe they aren't there anymore. Things have changed. There was a finger that came down that way. So, as Gary said, I think we should reflag that, because if all of a sudden that land opened up between it, the layout could be considerably different, and who's to say better? So, the two of us would like to come to the board saying that, you know, we'd like to go out and get that reflag. We need money to hire a firm, and Dwayne, you can share what the.
Right now, the options at the center, in terms of if there's an expansion, are very limited, and this would open up one side of the building significantly, and it would also mean the area that's shared between the police department and the senior center now, if that becomes available, it makes it very much neater addition. Yep. And, but right now, we're very limited as to where we can do that and the size that we can put it, and most likely, if we had to go out the front, we would have to be with a zoning court of appeals to have that.
You know, the setback and so on.
Can you explain what you mean by if it becomes available?
If it's not wetland.
If it's not wetland.
Right, right. So, there might be an expense, and Gary, you know, obviously, couldn't hold him to any number, but it was, you know, if you had to do, and we're only talking about the area in between, we're not talking about in back, we know that's wetland, but maybe that finger has come back.
So, the area we're looking at, approximately from the street to go back 300 feet, it's not a wide area or anything like that, but that way it.
The distance between the two buildings, we're talking 400 feet, 300 feet, something like that, not even that much.
Probably 200, maybe.
Sure, so, if we went out to somebody like a Levek, who does that type of stuff, we would need money for that. Gary had a guesstimate of it could be anywhere up to $5,000. If we are looking for a funding mechanism for that, that would be something that the selectmen could authorize from their expense account, which currently has $9,000, $9,500 in it. We don't anticipate being that much.
And here goes the trip to Bermuda.
Again.
But this, you know, this would be to the benefit of the town if we could build it, because I think it would affect the cost.
And the benefit to the committee. You want the committee to have.
Yeah, they'll have some, they'll have at least some options to know what they're talking about.
I get that done, we would, we would take a look at the wetlands and flag them, any vernal pools and so forth.
Basically authorize the Senior Center Building Committee to go out and get a new wetland study. Pretty much, Wayne and Gary know the people to talk to, you know, they've got the experience got the experience for that and just come back with a quote, hopefully under 5,000. So, is it?
We wouldn't have to go to multiple.
No, but not that amount. So, basically, you need the blessing of the board to go out and, you know, taking a quote.
We're taking it out of the selectmen's expenses?
Right.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Told you it'd be hard, Dwayne.
So, while we're on that topic.
When you were on the board, you come out and you gave money away all the time.
We didn't have it. If you remember, we closed.
I wasn't gonna say, mention that. We already talked about the street lights earlier.
So, still $2,000.
Go ahead.
While, while we're on that topic, you know, we're, we're on the senior center, which was, I guess, off the agenda. But I'm wondering if we should entertain a, a meeting with, with Becky and Ellen and the building committee, because we, we gotta, gotta get that news last week that somebody did the layout of the townhouse, was removing the library. And, you know, that, that brought up a lot of concern, and people were very concerned, well, what's gonna happen to the library? Are we gonna keep it here? Are we remodeling this building? What's happening? Well, if, if what you're saying is true about expanding off the senior center, what are the options there for some grant funding to incorporate a library there if Ellen and Becky would be on board with sharing a building? I think it's a conversation that maybe we should have, and I think it could be very beneficial to everybody. That way, there's open communication, and there's less rumors swirling around about what's happening, what we're doing.
Well, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out how we got from fixing the windows in the library to building a new library and spending $10 million to renovate the town hall.
Yeah, that was, I think I really, you know, I made, made this point to Bob, that went a little, I think, out, that got out before, really, the selectman had a chance to analyze what we were giving them.
We still haven't, we still haven't gotten, we still haven't gotten to Craig's point about how's the boiler, how's the?
Right.
Electrical, mechanical, lighting.
You know, we talk about moving walls, and we don't know if the bones are any good at this point. But, while you're here, Dwayne, so I thought the committee had a great meeting today.
Thank you.
You know, really got a, a really good group there.
I'm pleased with.
I didn't say for the pie, but I'm sure that went over pretty well.
It was able to get three different samples.
Wow, you are one.
Out of 10.
So, are you suggesting we have a meeting with them at some point?
I'm suggesting we have all parties involved that are affected, so we can all talk openly and have a discussion about the future.
I would suggest that we at least have the results.
Right.
Of the, that would be helpful.
Yeah, get that done first.
Yes.
That should be in sometime next month, I believe. They said 16 weeks when we signed the contract.
No, no, this is, this is, Gary was estimating we might have that back hopefully, but if you go ahead and.
Yeah, with the snow here.
Get the wetland study.
Yeah, yeah.
We're also gonna have the town hall study sometime next month.
But to Craig's point, you know, hopefully, the snow goes away, and they can do the delineation. So, you and Gary will work on that tomorrow?
I'll talk to him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you.
Appreciate it. Good to be seen.
And it would be timely, it would be timely, because Dwayne had asked me to look around for some money to assist the construction of an addition. And on Friday at the MMA, I was nosing around, and I encountered the Board of Library Commissioners, and they've got a grant program starting February 1st. So, I didn't find any, I didn't find any money for senior centers, not yet.
I mean, just plug the senior center right now with the Heart Springs Foundation. If you got clothes, drop it off in their parking lot. I just dropped off three big bags of kids' clothes last week, so.
Good man.
Anybody else wants to drop off there?
Yeah, that'll be on the agenda for next week, by the way. They've had tremendous success, and we need to renew their contract.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. See you, Dwayne.
Great. Wait, thank you, sir. So, discussion of January 16th, 17th, community meeting.
It was the first of two meetings. I do not have a date at this point for a second meeting from TechCon. But I had hope for a larger turnout. I counted 35 in the room and about eight coming in on Zoom. I think we have to try again for a much larger turnout for the second meeting. But we went through, I, I thought that the Jeff McElory did a good job in leading the group through the options and assessing what the general public would favor in terms of the priorities.
Thought they had a very neat interaction system to get engagement.
Yeah, that was pretty good.
Yeah, it was very good.
But I go back to your point, Bob, is that unfortunately, it's a bit like sometimes town meeting, or the, you know, maybe the advisory meeting before a town meeting, where you look around, and it's 90%, I don't wanna say town officials, but people involved with the town. We have to get broader appeal. I mean, it matters to every person in town, and I don't know, short of offering Girl Scout cookies to the next meeting, you're gonna get more people there.
I posted the meeting on the town website, so that anyone who wants to go back and take a look at what we did can do so.
But I think we got the notice out, you know, that's where we talked about sending the notice out through the school. We did that at the last moment. I really think we need to, next week, next time, it needs to be a concerted two or three-week push-out to people, explaining why it's important, their opinions are heard.
You know, Dalton's online right now, so if we had a date for him, we could, we could beat him to date right now, but I know we said he has no date yet.
Or even Dalton, have, feel free to set up a time, come in and have a sit-down with us, and we'll tell you what our things are. If you want to do a little article on it, great. So, that's where, it was a great meeting, bottom line, good interaction from the people that were there. Wish next time there was 100 people, because we got 5,000 people in town, almost. It affects every one of them.
Make another effort at it and see if we get a bigger audience. Clearly, making the decision of, of that kind of significance needs engagement by a much larger percentage of the population.
And you're gonna check with Jeff on the next step?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Correspondence, let's see.
Mr. Sibilia, and correspondence, Mr. Sibilia asked if we were going to respond to his letters.
So, I think a good point made was that the amended complaint removed all those allegations, which was key. You know, I think hopefully the applicant saw the error of his ways, moved all that, and now we're into the next phase of litigation. I think they did see the error of, things like that was just not sustainable in a legal system.
So, I would propose that I would draft just a short letter on behalf of the board. You guys can review it and just respond formally to him, saying those exact, saying that, you know what I mean?
Sure, bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Sure. Don't use that weird font, something like Times Roman, not that curly stuff.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
Gothic.
Gothic.
Yeah, exactly. The old guy.
I like the Gothic.
Like the monk, thou shalt.
Do you like how?
Thou shalt.
Do you like how I also bold the things? I like to really make a point, though.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah. It must be heavy, a lot of toner at home. All right, so, oh my gosh, signature here. This is the form to sign, Selectmen Reports.
What's that?
That's the form to sign. They can go back to the state, takes one signature.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Well, they charge by the paper, lawyers, you know.
550 of them.
Yeah, they weren't allowed to charge. A lot for private practice, I'm sure. Selectmen Reports, I reported on the senior center. There is a, an opening on the senior center board. Tina Duran has stepped down, so check with Becky, but I believe that's an under 60 position, so we should put that out there.
There's an, hi, John, it's Becky. There's also an over 60 position, because we lost Ed Norman as well.
Okay. And it is an extremely fun board that has a great time, very fun. If you came to the Zoom meeting, you would just, I mean, gosh, you'd never want to leave. So, that's there.
It's the senior center board?
The senior center board, yeah, yeah. Not the building, regular board. They meet once a month, second Tuesday of the month, I believe.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll put this on the website.
Okay. Let's see, what else do we have? Speaking of, Becky, do you have your budget coming in shortly, or?
I submitted my budget with holes where the salaries will be put in once there's a COLA determination or salary determination. So, there, I did email it over to your office, and I believe I'm on the agenda next Monday to review that with you.
Would you like to be on next Monday?
I think, I think I'm scheduled for next Monday.
Now you are.
Okay.
All right. How are the current grant programs? Any danger from the state about doing any mid-year cuts?
Not that I've been made aware of, no.
Yeah, they got more money than God.
I heard the governor on Friday, and she is very optimistic that the gravy train is gonna continue to roll for another year, that the state revenues are coming in, and that she's going to fund all of the grant programs for municipalities.
So, we should be getting the checks.
They got $5 billion excess.
Yeah.
They have $7 billion in their rate day fund.
But they get their checks from the income tax?
And they expect to get 1.5 billion from the millionaires' extra tax, you know, John's tax.
We're just telling you to buy some property next to your house, just the other. Okay, that's my report. Anybody else?
Parks and Rec is meeting tomorrow. I'll be there for that.
Don, are you going to the ambulance one Wednesday?
Wednesday, I'll go to the ambulance one. And then also, on tomorrow night, I have a meeting, the first meeting of the Planning Committee for the Strategic Plan. And this committee is gonna look at, review the utilization of all the buildings and look at also some contract issues.
I think, I know we all attended the school committee broad overview, if you will. Not a lot of specifics there, which they can't do until they get the state number, which, and with an administration change, that number always comes out late. But a bit of, I wanna say a bit of doom and gloom, but they did report on a lot of projected high increases in their budget numbers. Some sounded pretty accurate, knowing what I know about business going on right now. So, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact, there could be a large increase in the request for the school line item this year.
I think they said that their special ed was going up 800,000.
Yep.
That alone.
Yep, so.
I think a lot of that has to do with the state not being able to reimburse, right?
Yeah, the state raised the reimbursement rates for the special ed people by 14%, but hasn't provided funding to the schools to offset them.
Sure. Nice. All right, so that's the committee things. Bob, Town Administrator Report.
Okay, I just mentioned I, I went to the Mass Municipal Association meeting on Friday. I thought it was very useful.
There's no gas reimbursement. We have an electric car. It's not be clear.
I'm not asking for any reimbursement. Well, I have a parking receipt, but anyway.
Use that credit card.
And for the last week, and especially today, I spent a lot of time on the, trying to come up with numbers for the operating budget for '24. You did see, I did send you the grant request that I started with for the East Main Street Bridge. We had, you know, a $30,000 grant, but that did a lot of the environmental work. The engineering work for the bridge remains to be done.
Was that the grant that we got, and they did the study, and then it came back, that it didn't qualify for the grant?
No, that's not, no, that's not it.
That's not the one I'm thinking about?
No.
On the Main Street Bridge?
No, this, this, this will qualify, and I think we will get funded for this. And I think once, once we have the engineering work completed, depends on economic conditions, but I think there's some chance that we can get funded through the bridge itself.
So, is there a chance we're not gonna be grant for the engineering work? And my next question would be, since that's on the gaming pathway, can we use gaming money for that?
We probably can. I already have an agenda for the Gaming Commission of the sidewalk that we have talked about, and some money for police training, for the bridge academy work for, for the police department. So, they told me that you don't have to be limited to one grant proposal. I'm fairly optimistic that we're gonna get funded for this. I put a number in there that's a little higher than it needs to be, but.
All right, that's something to put on the agenda for next week. When we have Mark in here, if we get an update on our different bridge things, Rock-Adundy.
Yes.
The South Road Bridge is one.
I did talk to Mark about Rock-Adundy, and he doesn't know anything.
Right.
It's not uncommon for the state.
We were on, we were on that Zoom meeting. None of the people in the meeting knew anything.
Yeah. Okay, Ambulance Oversight Committee is meeting. They will do what the selectmen have requested, and that is make a recommendation. That's all that I know. I don't know where the votes are here, but they're gonna, I guess, we will have a number for a one-year extension, and that will be part of their decision-making, I guess. Kickoff meeting for audio, I mentioned earlier.
They'll have a number for that? They'll have a number for recommendation?
Yes. We have, we've requested from the President of Action.
Yeah.
A number, should the selectmen decide.
Right, but the Oversight Committee doesn't need the number to recommend or not recommend.
They don't. No, but that's really what they are focused on.
I think their focus should be on the service, the quality, and just the oversight of the operations on the, to make the recommendation.
Right.
Nothing financial.
What I've heard from them is there's a reasonable number, I think, that will make them more favorable, because some, maybe not all, feel as though the town would have difficulty finding a comparable arrangement for the money. And so, if the money is reasonable, I think that will incline, maybe, I don't know where the votes are gonna break out, but that'll incline certainly some of them that I've talked to.
I would really like them not to focus on the monetary aspect of it. I wanna, I want them to go into.
Performance.
Performance and quality, and are we getting what, what we signed up for? I, I want the recommendation based on everything. I don't care the price. I want them to make the honest opinion without a price.
Right. I mean, we're not talking about the bucks. From there, we want to know, we got the bang for the bucks we spent already, right?
Yeah, now, when you, by the way, when you look at the budget, it may be a little confusing. I, I gave you the, the numbers for prior years. Remember, we, we made an extra payment? So, the actual expenditure for, I think, 2021 was 305, not 333.
Then went on the next year.
But the expenditure for the next year is 370, not 353.
Right, but is that, like Don said before, is that show the rebates also or not? I know the rebates go into the general fund.
Right.
They don't come back against that line item.
I, I did not discount for the rebate. It was a $14,000 rebate.
Maybe an asterisk down below, just to show the net cost to the budget, per se. Like you say, it's not the line item, but it is, you know, kickback.
Okay.
Rebate.
Rebate, thank you.
Mentioned Tina Duran.
I said kickback once, and you scolded me about that.
Did I really?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
So, then there's a, a new hire at the senior center there. I'm working on the new grants from the Gaming Commission. And lastly, I spoke with our moderator today. He has made the appointments to the Government Study Committee, and he is going to ask that the selectmen sign the appointment slips next week and get the, get the Government Study Committee underway.
Are we still going to town meeting to get approval for that?
No, we did.
We did.
We did.
We did, yeah.
Special Town Meeting.
Right.
Yeah, the Fall Meeting approved it.
There's one more thing.
So, all we need, all we need is the appointment slips, and then get them, get a meeting established, let them elect the chair, and then off they go.
I think we talked about the clerical support, said if they needed any money, we'd take it out of temporary help.
That's what he requested today, that I bring up to you, and that's why I have it there. That's what he requested today, that I bring up to you, and that's why I have it there.
I thought we'd already said that.
The board is agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Finding somebody would be the big part, right. How do you make out with, so advisory clerk is?
That's on track.
You found someone?
Yeah. In the building. An existing employee who had few hours and wanted more.
Okay, then, good.
And so I've listed potential warrant articles on this.
And I see those, and one might be, came up today. If we go further, you know, with the senior center building addition, there might be need for funding for an RFQ. You know, so that might be something. Again, it may not be spent, but we need to, like, put money aside for it. They don't come free. I don't know what the number is, Bob. You might be talking, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand to develop a proper one.
And I have a list there of budget notes. It may or may not be comprehensive. I put down there, by the way, some funding for an actuarial, actuarial report for OPEB.
Yeah, Don or Dick's been talking about that.
Chart that I showed you a while back. I mean, it's, it's time, I think, that we start putting money aside.
You get on budget things. I was gonna ask you this, Don, before. The retirement thing.
Yeah.
So they still look at the nine percent, yes, or so?
Yeah, it's thirty-eight percent, that's what it's, yeah. That's state mandate.
Any refunds from prior years or no?
No, it'll be, it'll be eight percent.
Are they getting close to getting to the number of twenty, twenty-three something?
No, they don't.
No, no, they're getting, when do they project?
Thousand thirty-six.
Twenty thirty-six?
Yes.
Yeah.
There will be a decrease some significance around two thousand thirty-one. But up until then, we're gonna get hammered every year at around eight percent.
Yeah, plus any new employees.
Plus any new employees.
Plus new employees or other benefits.
Yeah, raises.
Will affect our cost.
Thank you, Bob. Great. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I like that.
I had to wait a second.
You considered it. I'd appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all.